Are we ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October 18th, 2023. Please join me in the pledge.
This is the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for to enter executive session to discuss, oh wait a second, the superintendent's evaluation, matters related to the employment history of one particular employee, matters relating to litigation, and matters relating to four particular students. From Mrs. Daniel? Second. Second, from Mrs. Oiler? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Abstentions carried six zero. Thank you. Just kidding, everyone. We're returning from executive session where we discussed matters related to one particular employee, matters related to litigation, and matters relating to four particular students. Moving on to item four. Any other changes?
Uh, yes, one this evening, and I'm very happy to share this with you, uh, being yourself, for appreciation. Uh, and so today we have a number of students from Parkdale who are here to share a few things with the board and thank them for their service. We are so fortunate to have this group that we have serving the school district. It's endless powers of volunteerism, and we are so grateful for losing here. We take time to out to say thank you. And today we have with us Ms. Kibler, who will be leading this off. But I also want to thank Ms. Mitoa and Ms. Parker for arranging today's presentation. So, take it away.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, and esteemed board members and other guests, we have a very special video from the Parkdale community. And we created it to honor our board members because it is New York State Board Appreciation Week. The video is going to share, uh, from our youngest students' point of view, an appreciation for our board members' commitment. Your commitment to the success and growth of both Parkdale and our other East Aurora schools has been tremendous. So, we hope you enjoy it.
So what do you think the Board of Education is?
I think it's where all like the gym and the cafeteria equipment is from.
So what do you think the Board of Education is?
I think the Board of Education is they they help our school. And I think they help us like with the gym, like get more equipment in for there. And they help us like get the lunch deals and lunch food, like all the equipment that they have to use for that.
So what do you think the Board of Education is?
Um, I think it's like, um, like to help like, like to get all this stuff to like help like kids learn at Parkdale.
Alrighty, so what do you guys think the Board of Education does?
Well, I'm not sure. Maybe the Board of Education is another celebrity. Maybe they stay in the middle.
Okay, what do you think?
Maybe, maybe they want their ice cream places.
Hmm. Any other ideas?
Maybe they're funny.
Uh, maybe they want, um, um, that if somebody gets into a toilet.
Or maybe if somebody gets injured.
Alright, so what do you guys think the Board of Education does?
Um, they make stuff.
Make stuff?
And they either help out the school. And they give ice cream to the ground.
And I think after they get all the work and they're tired, they go to a restaurant and give you ice.
Thank you for your ongoing commitment and service to our school and the community.
Thank you for supporting the students, staff, and families of the East Aurora School District.
Thank you for your service and the countless hours that you have devoted to the East Aurora School District.
Thank you for dedicating so much time to improve our education.
Hi, we're the Parkdale Podcast Club. And we wanted to take a minute to tell you about our school board. We know how hard our parents and teachers work to make our school a fun place to learn and grow. But there's other groups of people who work just as hard behind the scenes.
They are the school board, and we want to tell them thank you.
The school board is made up of people from around the community who care about making East Aurora Schools the best they can be. Here are just a few things the school board has done for us.
Thanks to the school board, we have way after-school clubs at Parkdale. There's steam club, spirit club, and of course, podcast club.
Podcast club is the best. Seriously. Check us out on Spotify.
Thanks to the school board, Parkdale now has UPK classes. We just added a fifth UPK classroom this year. Here's our new teacher, Ms. Wolford, to say a little about how awesome pre-K is.
My favorite part of the day in pre-K is definitely when we do centers, because I think that's also the children's favorite part of the day. It's really engaging time for our youngest learners. Every classroom has eight different centers. We have a writing and a literacy center, a math center, an art center, a blocks and building center, a dramatic play center, a science center, and a sensory table. And every center is filled with hands-on, engaging activities that change weekly based on our theme. So this week, our theme is friendship, and we're also doing D's for dinosaur. So the centers have activities based on those themes.
The school board also makes sure teachers have enough money for classroom supplies. It takes a lot to keep a school running, and we are always looking for ways to make our school the best.
They even make sure the library has money for notebooks every year. Parkdale students love reading, so we really appreciate this. So does Ms. Duff.
There's so much more that our school board does for East Aurora. They do so much behind the scenes that we don't even notice. But we want to say thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys rock.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, we really want to thank you. T H S M K Y O U. Thank you, thank you, we really want to thank you, thank you.
In honor of our school board recognition week, thank you for everything you do.
I'd like to invite Jenny-
Thank you, East Aurora Board of Education.
They love you.
Okay, I'd like to invite Ms. Jenny Kibler up for our final presentation, and a few of our students from the Spirit Club. Good evening. I'm here tonight with seven fabulous members. Seven fabulous members from our Parkdale Spirit Club. On behalf of all the East Aurora schools, we thank you for your dedication, your service, and your commitment to education. And as a side note, they told me they had been waiting for this moment all day long.
We created East Aurora canvases to honor you for everything you do to make our schools amazing places to learn and work together with our friends each day.
On your note cards, we put number one on your East Aurora team jerseys because you make our schools number one school.
We have a quote from John Quincy Adams. If your actions inspire others to dream or learn more and become more, you are a leader.
You come like butterflies, tell the world what you do each day. Like butterflies, you change, grow, and discover the true colors.
You helped them, you helped them find their wings and learn to fly.
Thank you, thank you for volunteering your time and being on our school. It gives you big heart to help shape, grow, and mind.
May you be proud of work you do and the difference you make. Thank you for all you do for East Aurora Schools.
Um, again, thank you to our wonderful members of our Spirit Club. There's a beautiful card, and they're created by Studio Parkdale, and also a token for a free ice cream from Rosie's. You can see we love ice cream at Parkdale. Thank you. And thank you, students. It's so good to have you here late in your evening. That was a phenomenal video, and thank you so much for your dedication. Amazing delivery. Nice job. Thank you. Eat so much ice cream. That's what they do. We thought it was appropriate. Okay, well, it's a hard, hard turn here, folks. Thank you. To item five, reports and discussion. Item A, the 2022, 2025, you've cut it.
That's a hard follow, I must say. Board meetings, I'm not following something that elaborate.
Hope there's ice cream.
Yeah, I don't have ice cream, so. Okay, so you have everything in front of you. I'll be going over the scrap if you want to follow along. I'll be right here. Just the high-level results of the year. We had a nice audit committee meeting a couple of weeks back, and it went really well. So, you know, we have our, our presentation to you here, which is more of a summarized version.
Can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry, Ms. Horn, we're gonna- No, the question is, will this be on the video? The, the reports will be loaded on the website. Very hard. I meant on, on the YouTube video, you know, that you always put up. Yes, the, the meeting is recorded. It will be posted. The presentation will be posted separately on the website. Thank you.
So on page three, we have the, the first report we're required to provide to you. It's the independent auditor's report. Uh, just letting you know, it's a clean audit opinion. It's really the whole point of us coming out is to let you know whether your numbers are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You did receive a clean audit opinion. And then there are a couple of other letters we're provided or required to provide. The first one is called the Yellow Book Audit, Government Auditing Standards. This is because you're a government entity. There is one finding on here. It's the same finding that we reported for a number of years. It's really about preparing this 70-page document here, providing you assistance in getting to your long-range numbers. The third report we provide you is called the Uniform Guidance. This is for single audit due to federal monies. Uh, we actually tested your ester funds this year. Uh, we have to pick a program every year to test, and we, that is the, the last couple of years the program we've been kind of required to test, actually. And we had no findings related to that, so that is a clean, uh, report. Okay. Then we'll jump to page seven here. The GASB 34 numbers. So the, the GASB 34 is your government-wide statements, and then we also convert them to a long range. So they include things like your fixed assets, which, you know, on your day-to-day books don't, don't show up, things like your pension reporting. You can see here, uh, really pretty consistent liabilities and assets. The, the big changes in that position, uh, that went up quite a bit. We'll talk about a little bit about that. Some of it is good operations in all the governmental funds. The capital, the general, uh, school lunch, debt service, all combined lead into that. But then also some of the, the ebbs and flows of getting your long-range status, so booking your fixed assets, booking the pension system, booking the changes in OPEP, actually led to a, an increase there. So about a million and a half of that increase down there is related to government operations. Uh, another 2 million is really kind of paper entries to get it to this long-range plan that the government requires. And you can see that here. Uh, your expenses were up quite a bit, but so were your general revenue. Uh, and like I said, a lot of that is, you know, grants and things like that. But a lot of it is also, you know, recognizing a gain from the discount rate on the OPEP going down, things like that that are really actuarial-based and not, uh, an, an impact on your day-to-day operations. So let's move on to the general fund, talk more day-to-day. So page 10 here, we, that, we have the balance sheet for the general fund. Not a whole lot to discuss here. You'll, you will notice your, your total assets are down some. It's actually due to due-to-do-firms between the, the funds. So the general fund actually was owed less from other funds at the end of the year, which is a good thing to have those balances in control. Um, your liabilities are up slightly. It's your TRS, accrued liability, and the rates are up in TRS, so that's to be expected. And then your fund equity is down a little bit. And we'll talk about that, but that's really your operation. You lost about 680,000 in the general fund. We'll talk about that in a few slides. The next couple, page is 11, is detail. You can see the cash is up, due from other funds is down. Page 12, more detail, and you see most of the increases in the, you know, column there that due to TRS. And I'll stop and talk about this slide a little bit. Page 13 here is your equity. So your equity was, you know, down in total. But most of that decrease is related to this restricted column. So that's the, the capital transfer you made. So you utilize about $1.7 million capital fund, capital reserve, which shows up as an expenditure transfer out. You're unassigned, actually, so you, you're, you're a bucket that's not really set aside for anything. That actually increased though. So, I said you lost about 680,000 in the general fund. You factor out that transfer, which is kind of a one-time thing, you actually made about $1 million in the general fund. Your general fund revenue was an increase of about 6%, about $2.6 million. You can see on the next slide, most of it is in state sources down in that second column. Your taxes also have played a role there as well. Both of those increased. But most of it, a little over a million of it was in state sources. Your general fund expenditures were up about $3.6 million. The big part of that is the transfer. 1.7 of it is the transfer out. You can see here on this next slide, that far column that has that, you know, little blip in it, where that's, you know, the transfer to the capital projects fund. Other than that, your, your expenditures increases in instruction, and that was in salaries and contractual expenses. You can see that on this next slide. So this is broken out by like kind of area, general support, instruction, pupil transportation. This page 18 here is broken out more by how you spend your money. Was it salaries? Was it equipment? Was it contractual? You can see the second and third columns where most of that increases due to. And that was all in the instruction area. A lot of that is bringing some of it back from the federal fund. So you spent a lot of pandemic money more last year. Slowly over the past couple of years, they're bringing that back into your general fund. So this slide is comparing your revenues and expenses. You can see here the, you know, you've been pretty close. You've, you've kind of gone from maybe about a little over a million of an increase to a loss this year of 680. But generally, you know, you don't have these big declines. You had some other districts, or you'll see maybe in the, the few slides in the school lunch fund where it jumps a lot. Pretty consistent. But I think this slide's the better slide to look at. So this bottom one is your net income and how that affects your equity. So your equity is at, you know, 2019, you started right around $4 million. You're currently at about $5.6 million in total equity. You have added about 1.6 in equity over the last five, four or five years. Um, and you can see how, you know, each year, that pink line, the net income, affects your equity. Any questions, general fund? Lunch, food service fund? So really, not much to discuss on the balance sheet. Very consistent, very, everything's pretty flat in revenue and expenses. This is where it gets a little more interesting. A lot of ups and downs. 2019, or 2020, actually, pandemic hit, you were, you know, sending meals out to all the houses and things like that. So you had a huge, uh, revenues related to that because everybody was getting free meals. Uh, 2021, you, kids started coming back, but there were lots of closures. Things just weren't as consistent in terms of attendance. And people also weren't sending meals home as often. 2022, you were open more often, and you were, you know, more normal operations, but you were still receiving that pandemic funding where everybody was getting a free lunch. This year, you'll see it dropped quite a bit. That's because the, that free lunch went away this year. So really, what, what kind of hurts you guys there? For, as a district, your percentage of paid students versus free and reduced is a lot lower than some of your neighbors. So your average meal last year, you got reimbursed $4.46 from the federal government for every meal you served. This year, it was only $1.99. So you lost, you know, quite a bit of money there compared to what maybe some other districts did. Or some other districts who are currently in like the CEP, so they're still getting 100% free. So that, that really drove that down. And same in the, with the breakfast rates, your average was about $2.50. It was under $1 this year. So it's just the makeup of your students and how they fall in those paid, reduced, free buckets. You can see that here. Your federal sources just really came down this year. But, you know, I'm not, conversely, your sales went back up. You're no longer serving free lunches, so the more à la carte type meals kids paying, that, that increased back to normal rates. Food service expenditures, that did decrease about $90,000. Really, it's because of the number of meals you serve. So with not having free, 100% free, you serve less meals, which is to be expected. And you guys have, you see on this next slide, you only have the contracted services and maybe some other smaller expenditures. So you have a third-party administrator handle your, uh, food service, where other districts may, they buy their own food, they have salaries over there. You don't have as many of those expenditures, so it's a little more controlled. But really, you know, it went down because your meals served went down. So then here, you can see the more volatility of that, you know, the ups and downs. Luckily, because of the way the meals are set up in this food service fund, it's really reimbursable, and it's really driven by the number of meals served, both the expenditure side and the revenue side. So they, they at least travel together. But this year, you actually, you know, you can see they're right on top of each other. You can see on this next slide, your net income, you actually lost $6,000. So you know, it was broke easy, really, at the end of the day. You can see here, your, the last couple of years, you're right around $400,000 of on equity in your food service fund, which is something the state may start asking about. They, they kind of want you to have a plan of how you're going to spend that down. Then the special aid fund, starting on page 2930. This is just the fund that houses all your federal grants, um, and some of your state grants as well, but it's mostly federal. You can see here the two outliers the last couple of years is pandemic funding. Uh, this year, you spent about $1,004,000 on pandemic ester funding. You know, that's going to go away next year, so this is going to return back to maybe the pre-pandemic numbers. And then the final thing we're required to provide you with is what's called the management letter. These are kind of best practices. They're not findings. They're not things that we think rise, rise to that level. But there are three things for the, the general management letter, and then there's one for the student activities. The first one, GASB 101, there is a new GASB coming down the line. It's, uh, related to compensative expenses of vacation PTO balances that teachers hold. They're going to change how we have to report that. Currently, the only numbers that make it into your financial are for the people who are over 55 years old. Uh, they're going to probably actually maybe even require an actual study to try to assign a value to even the, the brand-new teacher who just started yesterday. Like, what are they going to cost you? So that, that's coming. Section 4408, uh, so this was, you know, we had a lot of discussion on this. And really, at the end of the day, what it comes down to is just making sure you get those reimbursements on those stacks claimed. Get them filed, get them in, just to make sure you don't miss out on anything. That's really what our communication is there. Uh, and then the third one, the pandemic grant funding, uh, in general fund budget. It's just talking about, you know, trying to fill that gap from the, the fiscal cliff from the pandemic funding, and making sure you have, you know, the plan in place to make sure you can weather that, that scenario. And then the management letter coming on the extra classroom, point-of-sale records. It's an issue at every district. Uh, you're not alone there. There's just so many hands involved in those, uh, student activities that, you know, quite often the documentation that is received related to those isn't as strong as it could be. And unfortunately, you know, you get one or two advisors who really aren't as detail-oriented as some others, and things slip through the cracks. But generally, you do pretty well here. I will say your, your student activities is pretty clean, but it is an issue everywhere. You do that report to everyone. Any questions?
No?
Okay. Alright, good night.
Congratulations, George, on your team. Thank you. Now moving on to item B, capital facilities project update.
Oh, is there more stuff here? Alright, thank you.
Back to the chief seat, Stan.
Yeah, so I guess to come in today, um, to, to give a report, and then Jeff Stone's going to join us, and, and talk a little bit about the financing of projects and some of the ideas that he's shared with us in the past through the Facilities Committee. I thought it would be good for the board to hear. Um, so Steve's just going to give us an update on like the current issue at, at Parkdale, at Middle School, as well as kind of where we are with the rest of the project.
Good evening, everyone. Give me a second here to make sure this actually works. And perfect, we're up and running. So, as Brian said, he asked me to come in and give everyone a quick update. I don't want to take too long. I know you guys have a bunch of other presentations coming later tonight. So we'll run through all the current projects that are part of the capital project, as well as the current capital outlay. Talk about the schedule briefly, and then if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. So, right now, um, we actually have four active, ongoing projects. The, five, actually, five active, ongoing projects. The first one, the capital outlay project. Uh, that's your yearly expenditure of $100,000 from the, uh, May vote to do upgrades. Over the past few years, we've done phone upgrades at the various buildings. This year's project is to finish the phone replacements at Parkdale, as well as replace the front parking lot area in, in front of Parkdale. Uh, that is at the State Education Department currently, um, hoping for approval sometime in the next month, which will allow us to bid the workout. With the winter coming, the paving won't be able to be done until spring, um, but there's still plenty of time for that to be done before the end of the budget year. Uh, the first of the projects, mini-projects, I'll say, from the overall capital project investment was the expedited project to replace the doors at the high school, the two main sets of doors into the gymnasium. Um, after some hiccups, we did successfully get a contractor on board to do the work. Contract was approved, I believe, at the last board meeting. Uh, we met with them on-site. They wanted to do a little bit more exploratory work to see what they were getting into before they took the doors out. And we're just waiting on submittals and color selections from them to make a final choice and then have everything ordered and put in place. Christmas break's not happening. February break, um, per the district, is not a good time to replace doors in that space because of the amount of use that happens. I believe that's basketball season. Um, so we're likely looking at either a coordinated work effort over weekends where they have to put up temporary protections, or it'll be April break before those doors are replaced. Um, just kind of waiting and seeing on what the lead time is before they show up. I guess then the, the project that, you know, is, is the biggest to update everyone currently, the drainage issue and concerns here at the, at the middle school. Last time, we showed, uh, this diagram of what the intention was with rerouting the piping from the building out into the existing storm structure in the grass area before it goes back to Fillmore. Those documents are now complete. We have SEB approval. Our team met on-site about two weeks ago with, uh, with Brian and with Nate, and looked at the facility again to double-check everything. We made a couple minor adjustments just to try to avoid some of the parking areas better and maybe save the district a few extra bucks. Um, but the project is hitting the street on Friday for bidding. We'll be opening bids tentatively scheduled on the 2nd of November and hoping to award a contract on November 15, I believe, after that work. So it's going to come quickly, um, but the work's been designed. The work on the outside is sort of that routing that I talked about. In the-
In the basement, it's not work that any of you will probably, well, most of the public at least, would ever really see. It's all in a boiler room and around. You guys might tour the space. But we'll be cutting some pretty extensive holes in some concrete, tying in underground drainage from various roof areas that was from the original building and then additions in the 1930s, putting in a new sump pump and rerouting everything much higher over everyone's head in larger and new pipes that will not leak and will go where they're supposed to. We have a good solution, and I think our team did a real nice job with it, so I'm real happy with with the outcome and looking forward to actually seeing this fixed for you guys. So that gets us to phase one. I mean, we're on the third item we're talking about here from the capital project, but officially phase one. This was the stage that prioritized life safety. That's cameras, that's P A systems, fire alarms, elevator, as well as the bathrooms and some classroom renovations here at the middle school. You've seen these renderings and these images before, nothing has changed. We're still waiting on the state education department. We have architectural approval that came last week, and we got comments back on the engineering side of things today, which we will respond to by early next week. So we are on target to get these documents on the street in November, with the hope to award bids or open bids at least before Christmas, we'll know where numbers are, and then whether we hit the last board meeting in December or the first board meeting in January for contracts and notice to proceeds, we'll see. But by January, we'll have we will have contracts on board contractors on board, and we've met with B C C multiple times already, started laying the groundwork for this. Joe was in our office last week to sort of talk about the schedule. There are logistics to work through, obviously, what spaces can be impacted and when, so that coordination will happen over the next month, so that's in the documents with with bidding. We are still tracking the project at around $500,000 under budget from what the original referendum was, which is excellent. That will allow us to pay for the drainage work without having to make any other difficult decisions. So as everything goes well, we're hoping for positive bid results and and good results here that we can report back in the next month or two. Phase two update, the larger of the two phases, not more important or less important, just more design work involved in that phase. That's the library renovations here, the fax room here, hallway renovations, parking lot work, and the fields at the high school. One of these images, this one, you will have seen and recognized from the last meeting, but we do have a couple new images of the other spaces. So just as a refresher here, this is sort of the final turf and tennis court layout that was coordinated and reviewed. Our team is currently working on the details to bring back. So we have a meeting actually tomorrow afternoon where we're meeting with our engineers to go over some of their details so that we can present seating, pavers, details, lighting options, various striping colors and options back to the district over the next couple of months. Into the media center, we've held two very productive meetings already with the staff and some representatives from from the board as well to discuss the option and the layout. So I'll just walk through what this concept is briefly. So what you're looking at is a floor plan. This side is that wall. What we're proposing to do is open this up from window to window all the way across. Where the old stage used to be, build a simulated platform, a couple steps up, that could be used for student presentations or something, kind of a little feature piece, and then have breakout rooms along the back. So relocate these offices to the back half, allow those to be accessed off the hallway, which is where district office and facilities are located anyway, but have some meeting rooms for students and classes in the corners as well on either side, flanking a new circulation desk in the back of the room. And we had layouts that we established already for various configurations for board meetings with the intention that in this setup, you guys would be on that end in front of where the stage used to be, and behind you would be the restored proscenium arch, along with a feature wall where the stage used to be, that'll have monitors and TVs and places to display artwork and books and movable pieces as needed. Long way to go on the design. This is just a sort of schematic steps at this phase, but we'll be getting into more of the details and renderings and pretty pictures over the coming months. And then the same thing in the family and consumer sciences room. We held a couple meetings, really trying to get a handle on what the focus and the needs of that space was. What we're really proposing and looking to do is to create two zones, a zone for cooking and food prep, and then a zone for lecture space. And by opening up a bunch of the walls at the end of the space, being able to clean things up at this end in particular, where it's a little bit narrower, we'll create two larger zones and better configured zones than what's in the space. Currently, one of the major features and considerations there was storage, how to store the sewing machines, how to store food goods, how to store dry goods while they're not in use, so they're not cluttering up the space. We're going to be trying to design and build wall systems that have markerboard finishes, that are doors that are hidden, that'll allow all that stuff to be concealed when not in use and keep as much of the open floor plate available for students with flexible seating and chairs. So both of those are coming along nicely. We've got a long way to go. You know, a couple of the next things we're diving into with these meetings are the hallways and some of the other aesthetic areas here. Our engineering team is already hard at work on the pavement at the high school and the parking lot replacements, as well as the mechanical upgrades at this building, all the air handling units that have to be replaced as part of this project. Our plan is still to submit this to the state education department in the late summer, or sorry, late spring of twenty-four, so before the summer. So that'll be sort of a May-June timeline. And when we look at the overall schedule, we are still on track. We're actually on schedule, even with the two sort of additional phases that have come up and have caused some bumps in the road. The doors phase, we gave ourselves a nice long construction window, and we're still in the construction window, so that one's positive. You know, the drainage project, we are bidding. We are at the bidding point, and, you know, we're the construction on that I would expect to linger. That one is probably going to extend out into the spring just because of availability of materials to get that work done and scheduling it around inclement weather, so that'll be a little bit of a challenge. But phase one, the major piece, or maybe even a little bit ahead of schedule, if we get out of SED in the next two weeks. And phase two, perfectly on track, beginning a design to go into SED at the beginning of middle of twenty twenty-four. So next steps, we've just got some loose ends to to tie up here with some of the other phases, a couple meetings. We've got a couple items we'll be sharing with the district in terms of schedules and contracting requirements for phase one over the coming weeks. Other than that, there'll be getting the projects bid and then coordinating with Buffalo Construction on getting construction started. So we're excited to to keep going here. Any questions?
We're still meeting tomorrow at nine thirty, right?
Still meeting tomorrow at nine thirty.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Good seeing everyone.
So at this point, I'd just turn it over to Jeff. Jeff shared with us, he was at a meeting with us when we were in the initial planning stages with Young &amp; Right, and he talked a little bit about like the financing and Jeff, I'll let you explain. You do it so much better.
Well, good evening. Hi, my name is Jeff Stone. I'm with Hodgson Russ L L P, many old friends around the table here, and it's very nice to be with you, as I have in the past. I will start by saying that you're in really great hands with Steve. Steve and I worked together on a lot of projects around Western New York together, I doing the financing and Steve this type of thing. And when I think about Steve, I think about energy and creativity. Those are the two words that come to my mind about him. We do some odd ones, too. They're not all vanilla, you know, and sometimes SED has never seen something before, and I don't think there's a better advocate in Western New York than Steve in terms of presenting a project, framing it in a way that SED can appreciate, understand, and maybe bend a little on on what otherwise might be a rigid rule. So bravo to your architect. And a great firm as well, Young &amp; Right. As as for me, I I had a perfect seat over here for the the video, and I really enjoyed it. I I like my work because I I like educators, I like education, and I like it so much, I go outside my office and chair, like you do, I become a volunteer in education. I chair the board at SUNY Erie Community College, you know, which has its share of challenges like like you faced here, but also its rewards. I plan to go straight to our podcast club at E C C and say, where's our film? And if it's anything short of the mark when it comes, I'm sending them straight to Parkdale for a good little assessment and some some burnishing. But I my main role here, as it has been for many years, has been to work with you on the front end of the of the capital projects when they're kind of a gleam in the eye. Alongside the architectural firms, the construction management firm comes in a little bit later, but with your municipal advisory firm, certainly with your superintendent, your board members, business officials. You've always had a terrific leadership team here at East Aurora, both, you know, from the board right on down. Every time I go to one of our conferences, I see Mr. Brunson and others of your, Paul I've worked with over the years when he was actually employed. Now, he cut the salary part out and just goes straight to the work. Brian, of course, and just so many others here who have been, you know, very, very constructive advocates for the students in East Aurora. And it's a great school district, you know how well you're rated, and it's it's always impressive how you conduct things out here. So my role is has been at my firm, Hodgson Russ L L P, that of bond counsel. So bond counsel is a special role of lawyer where you you focus on the issuance of tax-exent bonds to create some sort of an infrastructure project. And that can be for a county, city, town, village, special district, or in this case, a school district. So I will typically get involved most actively at the beginning when you're saying, how do we present this to the public? How do we get a positive vote here? What should this look like? What schools should be involved? How might this be financed? What will the impact of that be? We work closely with your municipal advisory firm as well, you know, to make sure that we work hand-in-hand to figure that out and respond to what has always been a pretty strong committee out here, the facilities committee. I rarely talk to Joanne George, who's an excellent business official, without her saying, well, there's something going on in the finance, you know, the the facilities committee, they're meeting, they're thinking, they're discussing, they're debating. So when I thought about coming out here, I said, well, that's pretty much in keeping with what I know to be the the way things are in East Aurora. So that's what brought me here, and I think the idea tonight was, I I wanted to say a few words about reserve funds because capital reserve funds, because they they tend to create questions in other districts and here. And I thought I could perhaps be helpful by just sharing a few general thoughts about them and a little bit of overview, so you can have it at your disposal as you debate what you should do, establish reserve funds, disestablish them, fund them, defund them, what should be, what's their proper role. So I think the key thing to realize is that capital reserve fund is a voluntary thing. You don't have to have any capital reserve funds. I think of reserve funds in general as the savings account that we maintain at schools typically. If you think about your tax levy as the income that comes in to your home, we typically will have a checking account, your general fund, where you're paying regular, recurring, anticipated things, writing checks for utilities, insurance, salaries and the like. And then you have other more situational, periodic, and somewhat unexpected things, the roof, the furnace, the unusual capital expenditure. And for that, it's good to have at your own financial picture a savings account, right, to address that, so you don't have to go out and somehow jack up your income in a way that lets you handle this unexpected or infrequent thing. So it's kind of analogous to that. For school districts, you have your general fund, and then you have the option, but not the not the obligation to create capital reserve funds, and you have quite a few. Most capital reserve funds are created under the general municipal law, typically section six there. And that's where you see a lot of probably fifteen different reserve funds that get created by towns, villages, cities, counties, school districts. Not all of you can do the same kind of reserve funds, but schools have a nice, rich menu of things that you can create. Most of the ones under section six, the general municipal fund, which would be, for example, unemployment insurance reserve fund, E B L A R, employee benefit, holdover, hangover account, taxer, hirary reserve, right, for things people want to use their tax assessment. Most of those are created really under the guidance and direction of the board, not the voters of the district. You have a great deal of latitude when it comes to these more, I call them minor capital reserves or minor reserve funds, to create them, to fund them, to move some general money into them, to move things out. You can't overdo it, and you and to the extent that you have a fund for a particular thing, the fund balance must bear some resemblance to the potential liability that you're creating it for. So you can't create a $10 million unemployment reserve fund if you've never fired anyone or never had anyone be unemployed here. So and who enforces that? The Office of the State Comptroller will come in and say, hey, wait a minute, you're out of line here. And there's the law has all sorts of tests about what's in line and what isn't, so we can help you with that. But those are the general municipal law, section six reserve funds or minor reserve funds. Usually, they're they don't enter in much, if at all, with respect to capital projects. The one that does is created under a different section of the law, section thirty-six fifty-one of the education law. And that's a section of the law that applies only to schools, obviously, under the education law, and it lets schools create capital reserve funds. But the concept is very much the same as it is under section six of the G M L. You're able to do it, but there are, these funds tend to be larger pots of money, tend to deal with very large projects, like what Steve was talking about, and they can run into more dollars than typically you would see in these minor funds. So with that in mind, the law has provided that that these funds need to have more sort of taxpayer input, taxpayer control, before you can just make one, fill one, spend from one. So and even even in order to create a section thirty-six fifty-one capital reserve fund for capital improvements, you need to have the voters say, yes, we want that, we want that. If they don't say that, you don't have it. You cannot, as a school board, just create that. Furthermore, the the voters have the power and actually the obligation to authorize the funding of that. So money cannot go into that unless the voters have said, we're comfortable with up to, say, $7.5 million going into this newly established reserve fund. And once that vote is had, then it does go back to the board, and you can find the money either in unallocated fund balance or unusual COVID aid that you didn't spend or whatever. You wind up with money at the end, you can put some aside in the summer into the capital reserve fund and build that nest egg, that savings account for a future unusual event, so your savings account can grow, but always with the permission and blessing of the taxpayers, because they just wouldn't be in that position unless they had taken a vote at some point, typically in May, to create the account and to allow a certain amount of funding to come out of it. There's a further taxpayer protection as well, and that is on the on the withdrawal side. So the voters have already said to establish it, given you a budget of how much can go in there. And by the way, that is all the dollars that can ever enter the account. So if you have a $7.5 million capital reserve, you can only put $7.5 million into it. It's not just a maximum balance. So you can't run it up to 7.5, take away 3.5, and then put another 3.5 later. It's just that door can only have $7.5 million walk through it, and that's a change about ten, fifteen years ago. Used to be a maximum balance. Now they've even given more taxpayer protection by saying, no, if if you need more, go to the taxpayers and ask them for another reserve. And a lot of districts have done that. Kind of comes up every February when you're thinking about your May vote. Do we have a reserve? Is it filled up? If it is filled up, we can't put anymore in it, should we need another one? Is there some purpose out there that we foresee in the facilities committee or in the board as a whole that would drive us to want to have a savings account and to help sort of ease the financial burden of that unusual event? By easing the burden, I typically mean covering the local share, either in whole or in part of the project. You're you're very familiar with capital projects here, so you know they get aided at a pretty generous level by the state of New York in terms of building aid as a percentage. Joanne knows your exact number, but I'll guess it's 80% or so. And that means that for every dollar that you spend on your project, 80 cents will come back from the state, right, to make you whole. So where does that 20 cents come from that on each of of the dollars? And that has to come from a local source, and it can come, it doesn't have to come from a capital reserve. If you don't have a capital reserve, you can simply deal with it as it comes at you, sort of as an annual basis, because remember, you're spreading the cost of that project over fifteen to thirty years. You can do that. But you will only be aided at that 80% level, and you're still going to have to come up with that 20%. And so you'll have to tell the voters at the beginning to be transparent with them. Look, this is not locally tax-neutral. It does it does involve an increase in the local tax levy. Obviously, we're all New York State taxpayers, so any spending that occurs in New York State, there is some degree of tax impact on all of us. But with school construction projects, it's really been the policy of the state of New York to view this as almost two separate states. You've got a very, very wealthy state to our right and below us, southeast New York, Westchester, Orange County, Duchess County, Long Island, Manhattan. There are very wealthy people there and very prosperous corporations who are paying a great deal of taxes to New York State. Up here, we have we have pockets of wealth, but it's not as broadly based as it is in the southeast of the state. One of the ways the state has chosen to try to sort of balance that a little more is to say, we'll be pretty generous with state building aid on school construction projects. This will help the students in the areas that are not as prosperous do well and be on a same-level playing field. It also will It also will stimulate the local economies where perhaps they need to be stimulated more, because up here, we have those challenges. So some of that thinking has gone into this arrangement, and the feeling too, that this work just wouldn't get done if it weren't aided that way. So you've taken advantage of it, but you still have that 20 cents, and I'm using that to, probably is a little different than that, but the 20, that's where the capital reserve comes in, in a pretty helpful way, if you're comfortable with that. And that is to say, look, we know a capital project is not a recurrent salary, utility bill, electric bill, and so forth. This is a, every five years, we have one. It can be bigger, a little, sometimes we have the drainage problem, we've got culverts outside, we've had things happen here that you want to have the ability to respond to immediately and without immediately jerking the taxpayers up and down by saying, didn't expect this, but we got to raise the levy heavy because it's just coming at us and we got to fix it. With a capital reserve, you're able to somewhat smooth that out and create a sense of predictability, especially in a tax cap era, where having a somewhat leveled tax levy works to the benefit, certainly of the school district in terms of predictability and management, but also for taxpayers who get a bill that they can live with and doesn't go up, down, and sideways in ways that can be troublesome. So I think there's a role to be played by capital reserves up here in covering that 20 cents on the dollar. And as I said, there's a certain protection afforded to the taxpayers on the withdrawal side. So you may think, geez, it'd be great to take $5 million from our existing capital reserve and put it toward this capital project. Well, that is not going to happen unless the voters say yes to it. They have, they have control at the beginning, establishing, funding, and also withdrawing. So we know it's a lot of money, the state has said, so we want to make sure the taxpayers don't, you know, just have even the school board, the elected representatives, make these decisions. It's actually for them to make. But many taxpayers choose to make a positive decision to establish, fund, or expend from a capital reserve because of that predictability concept that I talked about, and because capital reserve fund dollars are particularly powerful dollars. You can take a dollar here, and you can spend it on a repair, and that will be 100% on the back of the local taxpayers. Repairs are not aided in the same way that a capital project is. You can leave the dollar in the taxpayer's pocket, but that's just a dollar in the community, and there's virtue in that. But if you do spend $2 out of a capital reserve in the context of a capital project, such as what you've done here, what's happening? You're getting $10 brought into the community, right? Because the $2 is spent locally, and $8 come from Southeast New York to help create your infrastructure here, and at least in your judgment, benefit your students. You're not doing things that are meaningless for your students or for your teachers. So I think of reserve fund monies as, you know, highly taxpayer-guarded and highly-leveraged dollars. So that's how I, the short thing that I think about capital reserves. So you want to be respectful. I mean, it's always great to leave money in people's pockets where you can, but if you can take a dollar, if you're going to make the best use of that dollar, I would argue that one of the very best uses of that dollar is to put it in a capital reserve and use it to leverage a project that, you know, would benefit the entire community, if not directly, parents with students, grandparents with students, in a broad economic sense, helping our students stay here. Like I mentioned, I chair the board at Erie Community College. Every day, I look at the meaning that education has in terms of people staying here, feeling happiness here, building part of the community. I'm talking to a board of education, so I don't need to sell that. But I feel that, and I think you do too. So it's a tool, you don't have to use it, it's voluntary, it's taxpayer-guarded, and it's highly leveraged. So I know that most of, I probably represent 70 school districts doing this kind of work, and almost to a district, they see virtue in capital reserve funds. I think the steadiness is a very big appeal, plus the leverage point that I made. They don't want to whipsaw their taxpayers, and they can't really control the capital needs of their district completely. You know, man plans, God laughs, right? So what happens, you don't really know what's coming down the road, and you've experienced some emergency projects here. So it's nice, the taxpayers get to protect it on the inside and coming out at the outset as well, and it really does drive a pretty solid degree of economic benefit to communities. So in terms of actually deciding and managing this, it's up to you. You are the school board, and you have complete control over what you do with the finances of the district. But if you were to choose to go this route, typically the way you would do it is think to yourself in February, let's ask Brian and Joanne, the business people and the leaders of the district, say, what do we actually have? When did we last create a reserve? Did we all, did we tap it out on that last project, or didn't? Do we have anything left? If there's money in it, the next question should be, well, is that, has that reached its maximum, and now that's just leftover money? Or do we have capacity still to put money into it? If capacity is there, you may not need a new one, but you may need to decide, let's put some more money in there, because we are talking about a future capital project, and we would like that to be framed in a way that's most palatable in terms of steadiness and economic impact on our taxpayers. I mention future capital projects because when you're talking about a capital reserve, you're really not talking about putting money into it and immediately taking it out to fund what Steve was talking about. That was done three or four years ago. What you're doing now is creating a new capital reserve, or adding to one, or thinking about this in a way that, when you put a project up in 2027, you'll have some money there to take the blunt, or to soften the blow there and to cover that local share either partially or maybe in whole. Most of our clients, frankly, given the high building aid ratios in Western New York, choose to try to make a project that has a local tax neutrality impact. And I mentioned earlier, and I want to completely concede, that every project has a tax impact. But what our districts are saying is, locally, local tax levy, your property taxes here in East Aurora will not be going up because of this. Of course, and a taxpayer can always say, well, if you didn't create the capital reserve, you could give that money right back to us. You know, that is a valid argument, that is true, just like the argument that state, we're all state taxpayers. But I think that goes, I think back, in my mind at least, to the sort of the steadiness thing, giving money back, taking it again. Whipsawing is, I don't like to do that at the college. I like a tuition increase of a steady predictable 2% a year. I don't want to do 6% and then nothing. It's just hard for people to plan. So those are a few thoughts. I just want to concede the accuracy of some arguments that are made somewhat against capital reserves, you know? From a taxpayer point of view, I think you can make kind of an easy argument that, you know, you're not seeing the whole picture here. But I think the leverage point and the steadiness point, in my mind, trumps that. So it's a fair subject for discussion, you're very thoughtful, smart people, so bring it up, see where you guys come out. You know your community better than anybody. But I know that all throughout my client base at Hodgson Russ, people are saying yes to capital reserves, making them, funding them, expanding them. If you don't believe me, take a look at the May newsletter, the Buffalo News in May, mid-May, and you'll see Board of Election Education outcomes, you'll see capital project outcomes, and you'll see a ton of districts, capital reserve vote, yes, 930, no, 122. You know, you'll see that, and it's district after district after district. And once it's created, then it comes back to the board to figure out when money should be proposed to come out to the voters, and when money gets in once the voters have okayed it going in. So, yes.
You can have both kinds of the, both the Section 5 and the Section 3651. You can develop both of those kind of reserve funds at the same time?
Yes, you, in fact, I would almost, Joanne, you'd probably help me here, but I'm sure you have probably six, eight, 10 reserve funds, some of which are capital reserves, where I've spent almost all my time talking about that. But the other ones are perfectly valid too, when you use them. The OSC folks will come in, take a look, that seems like too much, or, when did you last tap this fund? Did you even need it? You'll get questions like that. And sometimes taxpayers' advocates will say, you know, just too much is put in the side. Look for that. Don't overdo it, but use, if you do have tax cert things that you, and you do, you're in East Aurora, there are companies here that are trying to get lower valuations, homeowners the same. Again, it goes back to that steadiness and predictability that sort of utilized all this argument.
Thank you. Other questions?
Questions? Can I make some comments, though?
Yeah.
It's appropriate, a little later. Because I know we have a resolution to move money into reserve. And I'm sure that's probably why you're here. But I would like to give my stance a little bit on it, because I came up with the audit committee. The audit went fine, and the motion of moving money into reserves, and I brought that up. Now, I, being in the business a long time, I totally understand the importance of school districts establishing funds. It's a reasonable way of managing fund balance in the short term, setting aside funds to support long-range planning initiatives, things you talked about. And probably the most important is to stabilize tax levy increases. So pretty much how I feel about it and recognize it is what you said, but probably a lot shorter words.
No doubt shorter.
And I know it's a priority for the school district, I really do. The concerns I was trying to get to at a meeting that we didn't get to, and maybe didn't even belong at that meeting, is concerns about balancing future budgets. Understand, we have excess appropriations, we're going to move those in reserve tonight. When you really just take a step back and think about the questions, which foundation aid it will look like, it's possible our appropriations will go up maybe 2.5 million this year, 2.2 or other numbers this year. And we had a lot of state aid to do that with. We had money from the grants, so we were able to put, we had, interest rates were going up, so we could balance an increase of 2.2 million and a lot of that stuff. And that's how we balance the budget for '23, '24. What are we going to balance whether in '24, '25 is really my question. Leaving money in the general fund gives us flexibility. It's too late now, we can't do it, I understand that. But when I saw what the fund balance looked like, it was like, some of this should be left in the general fund to really try to take a look at what it's going to look like in the future with, as we move off the grants, as we bump salaries and fringe benefits up, as we address all of that stuff. And if the fund balance is strong at the end of '24 or '25, at least we've gotten that far before we start funding, funding the reserves. I totally understand the capital project needs. I don't think anyone here has spent more time going door-to-door at budget time, trying to, either selling a budget or selling capital projects and talking about capital reserves and the importance of it. I get the feeling around the table, at least, I'm one of those guys that say, well, either I don't support it, or I just want to explain the fact that there is taxpayer money going into the reserves, we're prepaying part of the capital project. So when I bring that up, it's like, you can't bring that stuff up, but I can, because it's open and it's honest and it's transparent. That's how I feel about it. And if I, roughly, I'm sorry about that, but I think, right now, we're looking at to another capital project. We just needed, I support capital projects, only makes sense to do them on a stage dime. I just didn't know, all these questions we have moving forward, with everything I outlined, if this was the right time to do it. We didn't get any options, other options, and I've had a couple, that what we could have done during the summer, had we known we're going to talk about this kind of money, I had some options in the summer we could have talked about and maybe eased some of this. But surely I'm going to support the resolution, I'll sponsor if I get it in. That's what I'm concerned about. And I think the whole board should be concerned about this next budget, how it's going to be paid for, and I'm sure the business official has, you know, answers to those questions, but we don't right now, and that's where my insecurity comes in.
There's another comment from the auditor, too, about once the grants go off. How do you?
There's a lot there, and I think we'll be having, we should be having this conversation with open ears, open minds, and a lot of questions going forward. I think all board members need to be thinking about all aspects seriously. We need to be gathering information. Thank you very much for being here this evening. We need to gather as much information as we can. And there are, there is information we all need in front of us, and then there are opinions. And our job as a board is to balance the information and the opinions. And I want to make sure that all of us are coming to the table fully informed and with our opinions, ready to discuss. That would be the plan going forward, that we all have the information, and everyone, each of us is having their opinion, our opinions, and having that conversation openly at the table. And I want to make sure we're all doing that. I think we've relied heavily on committees, and I think our committees are wonderful and beneficial, but I think we all need to come to the table, ready to discuss and ask the tough questions. So I thank you all for your input, it's valuable, as always, right? And as is the input of every other board member, our superintendent, and our school business official. So we're going to have some very hard work ahead of us. We knew that we would, we can certainly do it, but we all need to show up, ready to have the conversation, and then have it again, and then have it again, and on we go until we get through it. Fair? Other thoughts or comments? All right, thank you.
Jeff, before you go, I just want to thank Jeff. Jeff is retiring in December. Jeff has been a tremendous supporter for us through numerous, numerous projects and multiple million dollars of financing, and we've always been really grateful. It's a complicated process, and Jeff has done outstanding work for us.
Oh, yeah, thanks. I've enjoyed working with East Aurora, you know, I hope that came through. It's been a great, great relationship over the years. And on the retirement point, yes, I am retiring as a partner in the firm after 41 years at Hodgson Russ. But I do plan to, sort of, my firm kind of took me out behind the woodshed, and I've got a little sort of thing going for a little while more, like another, you know, six months or a year, or whatever, to help transition and just kind of be at meetings like this where appropriate. I do want to say, though, that my colleague, John Alessi, whom many of you know, has been by my side for 25 years in the bond group. We have six, seven, eight, nine paralegals and secretaries helping us do this work, plus our whole education law platform. So I'm just one piece of the Hodgson Russ galaxy when it comes to education law, but I've enjoyed my relationship here, and I hope to expand on that at NISBA in a couple of weeks. I imagine some of you will be there and look for me at Resurgence or wherever we find ourselves Wednesday night, and we can carry on this whole conversation about my retirement or reserve funds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. We are moving on to item C. We're to vote these meetings. Yes, we're discussing meeting dates. We need to pick. So we have options for the date. We can choose Wednesday, April 10th, Thursday, April 11th. Why do we have different dates for the component? We have to have two meetings?
First one was the, and the second was us.
They have one, so we get to tell them when to have their meeting. Okay. Does anyone mind if they have it on, is it April 10th or April 11th?
No.
All right. Pick the top one, April 10th.
Okay.
All right. The next one is when we actually vote, and we can choose April 16th. I'll have your, somebody tell me when our...
Well, April 10th is our meeting.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter, we can meet on the same night they meet, because I don't think anyone here is planning on going to the BOCs annual meeting, are you?
No, I don't think we've...
Well, we can, I've been to several, and they're worthwhile. They hold them at the technical centers, and they demonstrate the programs that they have. It's worth going to, but I wouldn't change their date, just, or our date, just for that reason.
They can have it on the 10th.
What we've done in the past is we've always met at 7:00 in the morning to do this, simply because they won't allow us to do it on a Wednesday. It has to be on a Tuesday.
Right, there is April 17th, but that's not a board meeting night for us. So, folks, what's your, what's your preference for a 7:30 in the morning meeting, simply for the purpose of voting on the BOCs administrative budget and board members?
That's mine. I have no idea.
We just need a quorum.
Yes.
The 22nd, the 23rd.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right, so the second two, the 17th and 18th?
No, the 22nd.
22nd, 23rd, okay. So in an effort to make sure we have a quorum, I would suggest we pick the 16th, 17th, or 18th.
I won't let you hear those dates, I'll just need to issue a quorum.
Okay.
I have no way, yes.
We might want to look at that meeting. Remember when we looked at the schedule, and Joe and I both said we weren't around for the meeting on the 24th? And we said we'd figure it out later? Seems like later.
That way it's on the 10th?
No, no, we have two, it's budget season.
We have two.
I believe so. For some reason, my dates aren't showing up on here, but I have a meeting today, some point in April. I plan to have a discussion about when we have the second April meeting, sooner than later. Um, we plan to have a discussion about when we have the second April meeting, sooner than later, and for tonight, is everyone else around? Paul is around, are you available on an early morning, the 16th, 17th, or 18th?
On 16th or 17th?
16th or 17th. Joe?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Yeah?
I'm not sure, if we have a meeting the 10th and the 24th, I may be gone that week, because that's something we don't have something, you know what I mean? I just don't know for sure, it's like, if we have a quorum, I don't want to, I mean, case...
So we're going to be tight either way, Dan?
Sure. Any morning this month.
Well, we have two noes for the last two, and one maybe, for the first two, and one no for the first two. And then the hedger bets and say, the 16th or the 17th is our best.
I agree.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday. Tuesday.
All right, Tuesday. Tuesday, the 16th at 7:30 in the morning, that was fun. And the 10th.
And we can end the evening by going to the, the middle school, high school course.
Fantastic. I love days that start at 7:30 in the morning and end at 9:00 at night, they're my favorite. All right, thank you. Moving on, yes? Moving on to item D, the New York State property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and...
Yep, we had a request, the board's going to consider it, and it hasn't even come here yet, so we want to put it on, so, I don't have any very much information.
I did a, I have a list serve that I did, for what districts responded, that I can share with the board.
Can I just make a comment out of the gates, to say, this is one of those tricky bits that comes before the board, that it seems that, why would we not want to support folks who are so supportive in our community, and can we also make note of the fact that New York State is putting that onto us to decide how we're going to redistribute those exemptions amongst our other taxpayers, and is that a rotten way to do business?
So, yeah, so I think that's, yeah, well said, it's, with these exemptions, we've seen these in the past, in the district that has supported, in the past, this is a new ask, and what this does, though, is it is a tax shift, so any exemption that's given to one is for the other, kind of use it simple, for those people that haven't done this before. So that's going to be the discussion, and so again, here's some data that we just got, which is really great, so maybe we can put it on as an agenda item for the next time, we can have some discussion around it, and take a look at the, that Mr. George got, and then...
There's quite a few, I'm sorry, there's quite a few details associated with this, if you read the recent article in the Advertiser, the town of Aurora just passed an exemption for this group of citizens, and, and it detailed specifically the requirements, how many years of service you had to have, and, and the amount of the exemption, and based on a variety of things, so it's a complicated thing. When we did it for the veterans a few years ago, there were several options, and, and I remember we discussed the various options, so I would recommend that, that the district do some research, find out what the requirements are for it, and what the options are, and give us something to discuss.
Great idea. And if there are no deadlines or anything here, this is just an item that has come up for...
I think it was, it's a permissive legislation from the state, which allows you, I don't think there was any deadline that said if you don't do it by a certain date, you can't do it, so I, I'm sure we can pick a time, sometime in the next few months to discuss.
Thank you, and it looks like the information we've received is sort of a 50/50 split on which districts are offering the exemption and which are not.
And thank you for sending out the list of current exemptions, that was an eye-opener, to see the total number of exempt properties there are in the, in the school district, is amazing. But the largest single category was, and that was one we, we discussed as a board a few years ago.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to start the discussion. Item E, food insecurity.
So we've been working on, we talked a little bit about food insecurity a number of meetings ago, like what could we offer for our students early in the morning for breakfast, so we're working kind of at Parkview and Middle School right now, because, I'm sorry, Middle School, High School, because Parkville's a little different, independently, and they're not eating down at the cafeteria on their own, kind of figured that part of it out, but what we're looking at is, I've been working with Matt Brown and Chef Mike, who is in charge of our food service, to see what kind of products could we put out, and we're talking a little bit, and we're going to be getting, Mr. Brown, do you know when that meeting is?
It's Tuesday.
So, Schuler's...
Tuesday maybe?
Yeah, I know, yeah, I think it is Tuesday, yep, so we've been trying to kind of get our calendars together, and so what we're going to do is kind of say, what does it look like? Some like fresh fruit, some granola, juices, milks, types of things, and then we're going to pay for it through the reserve, the money in our food service account, and see how that goes, and then we'll just monitor the amount of consumption, you know, how many kids are interested, how many kids are taking advantage of it, you know, and what does that look like? What's it costing for us to do it? How do we sustain it moving forward? So it's going to be like a little bit of a trial, hoping to get it up and running within the next few weeks or so, you know, because again, Chef is looking into the, kind of the requirements that we have to do in terms of, how do we purchase the food, how does he monitor that, all those requirements that are the regulation part of the food service program, and so that's kind of what we're working on right now. And we're also working on an allergy, an allergy database, and so we've been meeting actually with, I met with Chef and representative from Orchard Park, then Mr. George went back to Orchard Park to meet with Orchard Park and Iroquois, and how we can possibly come together, and maybe, I don't, we didn't have a chance to talk about that, but I don't...
Try to come up with a protocol between the three districts, that maybe we can get a BOSI's coaster to tie, there's software out there that can link right to your school menu, and you click on cheeseburger, and it tells you all the ingredients.
And all the allergens.
So if you have a food allergy, the parent would be able to do that right from our website, but very infant stages of trying to figure out the best way on, to notify people who have food allergens, of what's in the food in the cafeteria.
And so the algorithm is the actual way of just scanning about five or 600 product sheets into, into the computer, and you'd be able to search the database, but this new software is, is much more functional, and much more easy to search, and we're not sure if we can make it happen.
We're not sure if we can make it happen, if you go on the City of Buffalo's website, it's there. The problem that we're having is that it has to do with the federal subsidized food, and it's all determined based on your free and reduced lunch counts. So, East Aurora has a very different than Orchard Park, and very different from Iroquois, so even though personal touch service is all of our districts, every single one of our menus are different. So...
Can't even share the most basic services, because we're in a different bucket.
Correct. So we're trying to...
We're talking about two, yeah, two different, the food service thing that we're looking at, and so...
We're just trying to find a way to...
Yeah, I would follow up on your, your concern about feeding our kids, like, can we feed them? My next concern would be, can we feed them things they can actually safely eat?
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
And the percentages of food allergies, allergens is so much higher, so we talk a lot about getting milk to everybody, there's a good chunk of the population that would be bad for, so we've got to, like, we've got to find, we've got to make sure we can get...
So if it's free, it's more dangerous than if it, we charge them, is that the idea?
If it's free, if it's free milk, it is a benefit to some and a danger to others.
Exactly, well, so, charged milk has the same two categories.
Right.
I mean, I don't see the, I don't see the connection, it seems to me that, that, that if one has an allergy, then there has to be some control over staying away from that product, peanut allergies, milk allergies, whatever, whatever they might be, but that's not the issue that I was concerned about, I was concerned about the notion that some food, I mean, if, I don't think you can find anything that's totally safe for every human on the planet, there's somebody who's going to have a bad reaction to one of those granola bars.
Yes, yes.
So I, I, but I think, you know, you're cautious about how you handle allergy situations, but at the same time, you don't use that to prevent you from providing the nutrition that children need to get off to a good start in the morning when they arrive at school.
Yeah, I think it's, it's about, well, for your variety, so like, if milk, for example, we'd have to have juice too as an alternative.
Sure.
And so then, and you're looking at those, is there juice allergies too, so, maybe it's just water, right, so there could be, you know, those three choices as possible. Same thing, like granola's a great choice, there's, there's a lot of allergens in granola, so are there ones that are more easily, have fewer allergens, that's kind of, and so what other substance could we make for that?
We could, well...
Yeah, so that's kind of the morning thing that we're working on right now.
Well, I would commend you, first of all, for taking some steps in the right direction to, to address this issue. You know, I brought it up last year, and, you know, I, I made a pest of myself a couple times, but, but I appreciate the fact that, that there are others who, who share my concern, and who have looked at the research, and who realize that, that children are much more able to learn, and to, and to learn in a positive way if they're not hungry, and if they arrive at school, especially in the morning, with, and for whatever reason, for whatever reason, they, they, someone said to me, well, they're lazy, they should, you know, there's food, you know, and then the middle school people said, well, the bus arrives, and they have to be at the, you know, they only have five minutes between the time the bus arrives and the time the bell rings, so what are we going to do? There are a lot of impediments to, to the nutrition that you need to get off to a good start each day, I'm just grateful that you're looking into having as few of those impediments as possible, and providing some options for kids, and it's, at the same time that, yes, some children who can afford to buy a breakfast, or whose parent can certainly provide it for them, will benefit from it, but also, you're going to be dragging into the mix the kids who have true food insecurity, who don't have much food at home, who sometimes go to the cupboard to get something for breakfast, and it's just not there. So the, so the, now, is that the bulk of our kids? No, but, but in the process of doing this little service that you're providing, you're going to catch those kids too, and that's worth doing, in my, thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much for the creative approach. Any other comments on food insecurity? Thank you for the update.
Sure.
All right, moving on to item six, superintendent's comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I think you received the video from Mr. Roberts about our community service, there's a video for...
Oh, I don't have it, I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts had the...
Yeah, I know, yeah. So I just wanted to share, I think you saw the video, but I wanted to share it publicly, because I thought it was really impressive, and I'll talk a little bit about it after we get through it. And so, yeah, I wanted to share that with you, I wanted to share it with the public, because it's, because it just was such a great experience for our kids, Chris Ann Haley is kind of leading this charge, and this is part of what they decided to do, the seal of civic readiness is something new that the state put out, it will be as well, and all this type of community service and this type of work, there's a lot involved, but what high school has decided to do is that every student that comes to high school will now receive that at credential, at graduation, so then our juniors and seniors, because they haven't been in it long enough, but the kids who have started off in the freshman year will gain enough credits to get that seal of civic readiness, and that will be every, every student in our, in our freshman class, and every class beyond that, and I think we're probably the only district in, in Erie County, Western New York, that is doing that. I've done a lot of work, there were 600 people that went out to 25 organizations on that day to provide all of those, so, just a really special experience for our people, special experience for our community. So I just wanted to share that with you, and share it with the public as well, yeah. Well done. Sure.
Mr. Ross, did the students select the organization, or were they just...
Yeah, so, so what they, they got to choose, and they start off with seniors get their first choice, and then it goes down to juniors, y'all goes pecking order, yeah, and so they do get to choose, I think they get to choose like their top three or four choices, and then they try to give them one of that, and then they're paired up with an advisor, a chaperone for that particular event, and my student advisory club is like 7 through 12, and we're going to join them, the 7th and 8th graders, and so, and so we're really looking forward to that as well, so it's, yeah, it's a really special, special day, and we love it, and, just so, it's a, it's also a huge improvement on the community service they used to have to do, and so it's just so much more meaningful.
It's amazing to see everything they do, too. I mean, they really accomplish a lot.
Having worked with them, sorry, having volunteered with them, they, the, the amount of effort that the students put in, and the actual work ethic that they have, I wasn't surprised, but I was really delighted by how much effort that they put in.
Yeah, so thanks, just wanted to share that, and then I just wanted to share one other thing, I mentioned this to you before, is the Be Smart program, this is a program that talks about just securing firearms and ammunition within your house, a number of school districts have, have kind of jumped on board with the organization, as part of our state, our approach to safety, so I gave you some additional, like, details, a little bit of additional information, part of this is, is sharing this with the community, of course, and as well as the board signing on to a resolution, that we believe that this is important, that we want to support families in this process, and, and just like, again, for those people who, and you can see through the statistics, a lot of our community has firearms within their house, which is absolutely fine, the idea is, is just being aware of how that is stored, and how your ammunition is stored as well, so, that's what this is all about, so at our next board meeting, I'll have a brief presentation, this is, I'm going to do it next, in November, but this will be the Be Smart presentation, it's going to be a little kind of go through this, I'll also send you off the proposed resolution for the board, you're looking for any right now, take a look at that, and so we'll give you more information on that, as we move forward.
Thank you for the, we're going to advance, the information ahead of time. Thank you, and nothing else tonight? Okay, thank you, Board President, Board Member comments, Policy Committee, I would just ask you, oh, sorry, is there any legislation to...
Just pause for a minute, do any of you seniors, you're all like looking like you want to go.
Oh, you've reached, you are, you are welcome, you've completed your obligation, and also we'd love for you to stay.
Yeah, yes, you're welcome to stay.
Yes, you're welcome to stay.
I want to stay.
Go, I like it. Thank you.
Only required to stay to...
Policy Committee, just to keep an eye out for anything from Mr. Mayor Brady about our next.
He sent an email today gathering some dates from the committee we're gonna meet to look at a new policy on restorative justice and restorative practices and then begin our more combing through the whole manual again. So if the committee can respond to those suggested dates from today's email, that'd be great. And then we'll have more policy back at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything else. Mr. Cassidy?
Just two things. One, I think that all the board members are attending the NISBA conference and I just wanted to point out that the app is available with the schedule in it. And I know that I benefited last year from downloading it, taking the time to look through all the different sessions that are available so I can sort of prioritize and look at what ones I wanna attend. There's a good, there's a good group of them again this year. And I think also last year we did, I think, a good job of spreading out and making sure that, you know, that we were, we were attending the ones that we felt were most important. But also in some, we were doubling up and having two sets of ears. And so I just wanted to point that out because I was happy to see that without leaving any names. The only other thing is that Monday I attended NISBA's annual business meeting where in addition to electing officers, we set the legislative priorities for New York State School Board Association. So the process starts in the summer when school boards across the country, or across the state are worked, put together resolutions on priorities that they see within their district that they want the State School Board Association to advocate for. This year there ended up being a slate of 56 different resolutions that were presented and discussed.
Thank you.
And, you know, so we all received those and they will be sending out the results of those. And I will, I believe they'll go out to all of us, but should they only come to me, I will make sure to pass them along. And I will also offer it up to anybody who wants to attend next year. You were more than welcome. What was advertised to be a six-hour meeting was an eight-hour meeting from 4:00 p.m. until midnight on Monday. And definitely certain, certain counties on the eastern side of the state were very commenting.
Mr. Cassidy, I think one of the admin is willing to step in. I can see a lot of hands being.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Roberts agreed to go. There you go.
It's a valuable process. It's democracy in action. It's fantastic. What they kept stressing was that we are not passing legislation. Yet, after saying that repeatedly, people kept debating these as if we were passing legislation. We were, we were presenting what we want them to advocate for and, and as, as a collective of, I think, what, 700 school districts across the state are, are trying to come to some sort of agreement on. And, yeah, so I would definitely recommend that we continue to share the wealth with regard to the opportunity.
I think I was only in for six hours last year. This seems epic.
Anyhow, that was.
I know you could hear which ones, although one through 32 were passed, but then there were others that.
No.
So they didn't give you immediate results?
No, we had them.
Oh, you had them.
I unfortunately was suffering from some lag with computers. So while I recorded all of them, there was one, the, dealing with food security, that my computer glitched and by the time they announced it, I finally came back on. So that's the only one I honestly don't know, but no. So they do, they do a consensus agenda on the sunsetting ones, one through 14. Six of those were chosen to be brought out and I believe all of them ended up passing. Yeah. And then, and then the remaining ones that were recommended by NISBA were reviewed and I would have to pull up my notes, but I can't say for certain that all of those were voted in favor of. The ones that were not recommended by NISBA, certainly there were some that were passed by. So, yeah, and that was the other thing is the forum kept, we kept getting closer and closer to not meeting forum. Forum was 200 at midnight. We made our last vote, we had 200.
That's pretty scary because by the time you get to those, you've lost a lot of folks and the only ones who are sticking are the ones in, in opposition to what NISBA, the committee has presented.
It was, yeah, so it's, it's an interesting process to have been a part of and I hope not to do it again soon.
I'm so grateful for your eagerness going in. Thank you. It's like a club. You should all participate and see what it's like on the other side.
Not much, just the agenda too, the conference thing. The, I was at Homecoming. At Homecoming and that was super fun. Lots of kids there, lots of fancy outfits. You know, I was working the table, working the food tables. I'd say in general, it was always fun to be part of and I really think that if any of the board ever wants to volunteer at the food table, you, I'm sure you would be welcome. You hand out drinks and you just kind of get to see what's going on. But that's always fun. And then I was also at the first annual family night here that I'm sure Brown's gonna talk about. But I'll just say my experience was I was very happily surprised at the number of students that were there and just the massive amount of just fun, running, animated fun that they were having, but, you know, controlled. So that was really well done and I believe that was organized by the middle school PTO and first about to see what would happen. And I, I hadn't talked to a lot of parents there. I know that the parents appreciated a time to kind of see other students and talking to each other and it seemed pretty positive from my end.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Thank you for continuing to find the time to volunteer with PTO.
Education Foundation representative was recently. Incredible job again. Thank you to everyone on the Education Foundation Board and foundation. It was an incredible event.
Thanks for coming, for those of you who were able to. It was worthwhile.
It was, definitely.
It was excellent.
And the other thing I just wanted to remind everyone of our visitations. Parkdale in the morning on November 1st, Middle School in the afternoon on November 1st, and High School, November 8th in the morning. I've only gotten a few responses from people as far as what you want to see at these visitations. So I'd like to get this list to the principals by Friday, Monday at the latest, so then they can just plan accordingly based on what you really wanna see during these visits. So please do get that chimney by Friday.
Thank you. And I think what we've recognized in recent years is how important the time is with the teachers and staff, but it's so valuable and I'm grateful that we've flipped to having those conversations. So administrators who really enjoy those conversations are so informative. Mr. Flowers?
Just a few things, but they're quick. I attended the Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Team Meeting on September 21st. Several items on the agenda, the main topic of conversation centered on legislative advocacy and importance of getting the message to legislators before the state, well before the state budget's introduced. It's too late at that point. So, you know, as you know, as you know, they sent out some questions and they're trying to identify the five top priorities to talk. Meeting tomorrow night, so I'll get the results. I'll just pass it on to you as to what are the five that were decided on. But the audit committee, as I mentioned earlier, that was met in 26th of September. The information shared there, very similar to what was shared here. We just had a more in-depth conversation regarding expenditures, revenues. And that's for all the funds. And then the changes according to requirements, he just kind of glossed over it, but there's a lot of changes there and stuff. And that was introduced into the, into the report. So as you're reading through it, you may see big fluctuations in areas. I would just disregard that because of the rules of reporting and everything, but the audit was fine and finances are fine. Certainly I recommend, more of the audit tonight. And then finally, I attended the Erie County Association School Boards Dinner on October 12th and the featured speaker was Dr. Rick Timms. And he touched on a lot of areas. Foundation aid funding was, school enrollment and how that's gonna factor into state aid this year. The combined wealth ratio, I'm always interested in that. It listed all the school districts in Erie County and where, ours is the third highest. So there's only two other districts higher than this, which doesn't really bode well and it's a big part of state aid numbers and stuff like that. So something to watch for as we get to state aid printouts and the governor's proposal. And then a lot of the time on zero admission buses and just a major impact. And so I know I mentioned one time, it'd be nice to have a presentation here. Personally, I don't need it now. I think it's scary a little bit. They want 50,000 buses on the road. My 28 here.
Something that makes sense.
Actually, 20 here, so I'll go beyond that. They're looking, there's like 60-some electric buses on the roads now. You need to get 50,000.
60 isn't 60.
60-some, six, no, yeah, like 60-some. They need 50,000. That comes to like $20 billion. But they're gonna be aided in transportation and so I could think about the sum of the aid coming to foundation and other areas will probably be sucked up by this. But it was, it was an interesting conversation, a little bit frightening. And there's a lot to that, but those are just a couple of highlights.
Thank you for attending the NISBA.
I'm going to the legislative dinner in November. And some of the legislators are actually coming.
That's great.
I'll report back on that.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing who turns up and what they have to say.
Is that the one that Beth's on out, you're doing it on the 60?
Yeah, I can't think of any.
Mr. Brunson?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the leaders of the, of Erie County, the legislature and the county executive for implementing the ambulance service that, that was recently initiated. The backup ambulance for our area is now located in Colden. And should the regular ambulance service, the private service that the town contracts for, should that not be available, there's a county ambulance now that can back it up, which makes me feel a lot more comfortable about, about some of the issues that were raised at the Safety Committee meeting a couple of months ago. The, there's also plans to have another, several more ambulances scattered throughout the county and one of them is intended to be in the town of Aurora on Route 16. So, so I'm looking forward to that and I think the county leadership be congratulated for addressing this issue in a timely manner. Secondly, especially since I'm the one who raised a ruckus a few months ago about what a lousy job they were doing with regard to ambulance service. So I'm pleased to be able to say that now.
Pretty quick response to your complaint.
Well, that's what, that's what Mr. Russ said to me, said, "Oh, well, I'm sure this was because of what you said at the board meeting." I said, "Yeah, sure." Like they heard and they, I said, "The board." The only other thing I have to say tonight is that the foundation board was very, very much appreciative of the hospitality of Mr. Roberts and the high school faculty when the board toured three of the grants that were approved last year. And we, we visited the deer exclusion zone in the woods to see what happens when you have an eight-foot-high fence preventing deer from grazing in a certain area in the woods and see how that affects the flora and fauna. It's a science project and we financed that. We visited the sustainable agriculture project and got to hug a chicken or two. And the, watching the students constructing the different structures there, it was very impressive group of people. And I just had no idea chickens grew as quickly as these ones. I mean, they're like this. They've been there since September, right? So anyway, you can, you can order a chicken if you want to by filling out a form.
I saw that, that's not the chicken that they're raising.
Yeah. They're gonna kill them?
This is a farm.
It's a farm.
They're ra, they're raising two different kinds of chickens. They're raising broilers, okay? These are meat chickens and they're raising egg layers. So they, the egg layers will be there for several years laying away, but they're still very young and very small and they, they will be there year-round. The others are, are chickens that arrive in the mail, a week old, little bitty chicks, and two months later go to market. There you go. So we also visited the Blue Devil Design classes and we had a wonderful opportunity to hear some very articulate students tell us about the, the financial part of it, the business end of things, the, the technical part associated with the design work and the manufacturing. We got to see some snow blowers and lawn mowers that are being reappeared by our students and I, and the whole presentation came, was done by the students, which I thought was great. So we, so on behalf of the foundation board, thank you to the high school people for welcoming us and we had a great time. Now, we're going to visit, as a board, I suggest we see some of those things when we go.
I asked Mr. Roberts to show you both of those. They, as Dan had talked to me about how, how much they appreciated the, that was here in the middle of the year, you know, smaller gas. To see the farm, so that'll be on the list. And then the one thing about the farm, again, with our food service, Mr. Roberts and two of the teachers that are leading the, the food service director, they're talking about how they can use the chickens and also the herbs and the other vegetables that we grow on-site in our food service program. And so they're working on that process right now.
They started with the chickens, but they, in spring, they're going to be planting crops in that same farm. So it'll, it won't be.
In that hoop house you saw that they were building, that's.
Yep. That's where the, the hens, the, for laying eggs will, will winter.
Yeah, in the one house and then the other one will, will still.
The other one will be a greenhouse for growing.
They call it processing. This is a wow.
Okay, moving on, Mrs. Dan. Well, just a reminder, we have our Safety Committee meeting on Friday, so just, I wondered if anyone from the board is gonna be attending the pre-law conference for NISBA? Did anyone sign up to do that? Okay. And then, Mr. Russ, you had mentioned something that we might be discussing whether or not we're going to the event on Friday.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I would suggest after the meeting, we can probably coordinate.
Okay, all right.
I forgot a team I was gonna ask that. Great, thank you.
Everyone else doesn't need to stay for that, but.
Thank you.
Administrators, hello, thank you for being here. Yes, Mr. Ross.
I just was saying hello.
Hello. Thank you.
If you don't mind, really quickly, it is National Cyber Security Week, actually Cyber Security Month, so taking steps with our students and our staff to help them become more cyber secure. Included in that, we're organizing our cyber insurance. Last week, I know it was in deposit for this year for us to readjust. We had a million dollars in coverage with a, I believe, $35,000 deductible. We were able to reapply, go with a different vendor, and because of the amount of changes we made this year, we now have $3 million in insurance and coverage with the $10,000 deductible for $25,000. So we are thrilled. They were exceptionally complimentary, even called to check on the answers to make sure I had them right because most schools are not in the place that we've been able to get to. So it was really, I went home after, I feel pretty happy about that one. So we've, we've made a lot of adjustments and changes to make sure that our network and our systems are not hacker-proof, but as good as we're able to do with the resources we have. So the cyber insurance is back in place for another year, new vendor, much more competitive and it was a really happy day for them. We're also working, I just wanted to highlight a small improvement that we're... We're also working, I just wanted to highlight a small improvement that we're, we piloted our new electronic forms tool, our acceptable use policy for devices, and both Parkdale and the middle school are using it for early releases and dismissals and attendance notes. They could do it virtually now through our app, our Power School Parent Portal app. So the nice thing about that is that, you know, if my daughter Gia is absent because she has to go to the dentist in the morning, I could put it in the app really quickly, and then the office can just pull a report whenever they're ready and pass it on to the teachers without having fifty pieces of paper come in and have to separate them by student and early dismissal and excuse blah, blah, blah. So we have a number of other forms on the agenda to convert. We're in the process of that, including our registration going for our new students enrolling in the district. We're working with our new registrar to do that, but we did roll it out. We have a number of trials in place. It seems to be going quite well. We're tweaking as we learn, but it's a nice change for our parents to have ease of access on their phone or on their computer versus having to, it sounds so silly, but get the piece of paper out and remember it. This makes it easier, so I'm kind of proud of both those adjustments and improvements.
Thank you, Mrs. Mason. Thank you for the update, and wow, those are two incredible lifts for the district. What huge improvements.
At Parkdale, we just want to mention that we had an amazing Fall Fest last Thursday. We had a magician on site, we had face painting, there were pumpkin decorating, bounce houses, putt-putt, alpacas, chickens, bunnies. There were so many things going on at Parkdale last Thursday evening. It was a wonderful opportunity for our families to come out, have a lot of fun together. The basket raffle was hugely successful. I believe we had one hundred and twenty-two items this year for raffling. So it was just a great event, lots of fun, lots of memories made.
Hi.
Hi.
As Ms. Imbrotta had mentioned, out of our jealousy of Parkdale and their Fall Fest, we did do the family socials. So we weren't sure if we were going to get thirty or three hundred people, and we ended up with a great turnout. And the purpose behind it was to generate some activities that families could get together here at the middle school, because there's plenty at Parkdale. But as you get here to the higher levels, it's fewer, a little more segregated, whether in clubs or sports. So we thought it was a really great event, and had a lot of people turn out, and school trucks and all the fun activities as well. So hopefully this will be a tradition we can continue.
Is that something like over two hundred, right?
Three hundred and fifty people, spread out, didn't look like a whole lot, but as we started counting, it's our belly button, then we ended up with, yeah, well over two hundred people at one point.
Great opportunity for the community at the middle school. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lombardo.
Mike, good morning, afternoon, evening, wherever we are. Athletics-wise, homecoming was, I thought was a very strong success, high levels of participation, which is what we're always looking for. The spirit enthusiasm kind of was evident throughout the high school. We are in, of our eleven sports, kind of in their competitive fall seasons, we have twelve artsy sports, but eleven are really competitive. Nine have won division titles. The tenth one, a tenth one being girls' golf, if they had a small school, large school bracket, would have won the small school bracket in their first year ever. And we are, playoffs start tomorrow with boys soccer on the turf at seven o'clock and a quarterfinals sectional game. So we're kind of into that playoff mode here.
Amazing. What's a participation again? How many students participate?
Between seven and twelve right now on the East Aurora. If you take out the Poly Athletics with some of the Mer Sports, I believe the exact number is three hundred and ninety-six kids right now, athletes in the hall. So.
High school?
Yep. So seven to twelve with modified. Yep. So.
Thanks.
Thank you all. Moving on to community member comments, first, I'd like to point out to, did I catch everybody? Okay, thank you, sorry. Wanted to point out that we received some emails, one about the property tax cap exemption, one about open meetings law, and one about school board early literacy campaign, two conference, bits of conference information, turf email, one about the boat races at the high school, student conduct, and chicken sales. Did you all receive those?
No.
Thank you. This morning, did you want to speak today?
Yes, thank you. Nice. Just have a seat? Okay. I haven't been sitting long enough, right? So thank you for updating the website for better access to some documents required by the New York State Open Meetings Law. However, I noted tonight's online agenda did not include an attachment of draft minutes and documents, if any, for discussion of New York State property tax exemptions. As you know, if board members are viewing documents relating to agenda items, those same documents must be available to the public. Thank you also for updating the reasons listed on the agenda for entering into executive session so that they are in better compliance with Article VII of the New York State Public Officers Law, Section 105.1. However, I remind you of a frequent pattern of non-compliance in the past, including the instances I pointed out on the September twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three board meeting. On tonight's agenda, I am surprised to still see matters relating to litigation. As you know, case law has determined that this is insufficient language without naming which litigation will be discussed, and I'm formally requesting that information, please. According to the list of Board of Education Committee representation, only two members are assigned to the Audit Committee, Paul Blowers and Daniel Brunson. This is in violation of Education Law 2016(c)(3), which requires a minimum of at least three members to serve on this important committee. What is concerning to me as a taxpayer is that both these members are former administrators in the district and were involved in two issues of serious fiscal mismanagement. Mr. Blowers served as business official from 2015 to 2018 during a period when East Aurora Union Free School District was repeatedly cited by the New York State Comptroller for issues of fiscal stress. Mr. Brunson served as a board member and board vice president during this period. Number two, both committee members served on the board that approved excessive use of fund balance. According to the Buffamati Whipple-Badafaro PC Audit Report of 2021, twenty twenty, through 2021, this was a violation of New York State Real Property Tax Law 1318.1 that limits unassigned fund balance to four percent of the budget. Three point three million dollars in excess funds should have been returned to the taxpayers. The Clarence and Williamsville School Districts were cited in recent state comptroller audits for this same violation of law. Finally, tonight's independent audit report recommends the district develop a plan to address the discontinuation of one-time pandemic funding. The district's response is stated as, "The district will make every effort to maintain programming to address student needs post-pandemic. This is not a plan, nor does it specify any budget processes that were recommended by the auditor." Does this mean taxpayers should expect a large tax increase to compensate for discontinued pandemic funds when these funds were supposed to be non-recurring usage only? Insufficient representation on the Audit Committee, a history of missteps in financial-
Just about to cut, Mrs. Horning.
I just, can I finish this sentence?
Yep.
It's my last sentence. "Insufficient representation on the Audit Committee, a history of missteps in financial management, and an urgent situation regarding impending loss of government funds call for a more compliant, transparent Audit Committee and financial management process." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. I would just like to comment briefly that some of the statements related to occurrences during the gap elimination years, and anyone who was involved or paying attention would know that fiscal stress was going around like a bad virus during that time, but thank you for your thoughts.
Well, we're better than that. We expect it.
Moving on to reports and discussion items, Part Two, 11A Business-
Yes, yes. Ms. Lyons is going to pass out just a little report that I did that I'm going to talk about during the school lunch report. Can I begin? Auditors went over the June statements. I'm going to jump right to the August statements and report on those. Our general fund, as of the end of August, had expended approximately eight percent of our budget and received approximately fifty-seven percent. That fifty-seven percent's a little, it's receivable based on the tax warrant. The cash hadn't already been received by then, but we're starting to receive the cash In the school lunch fund, in the news, there was a lot about community eligibility, so we went through the process of filling out the form online to see if we were eligible. The need needs to be twenty-five percent poverty based on these numbers in order to be community eligible. East Aurora is currently at eight point five one percent. And what I shared right there, Chef Mike came to me and asked me about the discontinuation of a salad bar at Parkdale. Community members had come to the district and said, you know, Parkdale should have access to a salad bar. It's a little more challenging at the younger ages than it is at the higher ages to do a salad bar. So we agreed that we would do it on a trial basis, starting at the end of last year, every other week, and this is the data based on that. And personal touch, and Chef Mike are requesting that we don't do salad bars anymore at Parkdale. Pre-made salads are available every single day at Parkdale, and I just wanted to make sure from a board perspective, there's no resolution, what thoughts are, I don't want to-
It's too wasteful to continue it. As long as they have a salad available to them, to me, that's adequate.
Does anyone else have any other different meanings?
I think I know that they're very costly to maintain, cost of labor and the food waste are very high, you know, small-use setting.
Okay. As long as we have salad available to them, then I don't see why not.
Thank you for the research and the information, it's very helpful.
You're welcome.
Also, can I comment just a moment on, when we talked about, was there any legislation, you know, and we were talking about food security earlier, I failed to point out the fact that there was significant change in the eligibility for free lunch and breakfast for students under the community program. And it was a forty percent eligibility in the past, it's been reduced to twenty-five percent. That is going to result in thousands and thousands of students being able to be fed free of charge across the entire country. And the New York State Legislature appropriated three hundred and forty thousand dollars to supplement those funds. So there will be hundreds of schools in the state of New York who will now be eligible, who were not eligible in the past. Now, we're not one of them, but there will be a lot of places where kids who will be, will have more access to food and better access to food as a result of that change in legislation. And the three hundred and forty million supplements the district cost, because even though the federal government will reimburse you for, if you have reached the twenty-five percent threshold, it's really not enough to cover all the costs. So the state's contribution will supplement that. So there's significant movement. It's up to eight states now in the United States that provide free breakfast and lunch for all students in public schools in the entire state. So there's movement that's occurring, and what we're doing locally is contributing to helping with that issue as well. So thank you.
And there's at least twenty-five other states that have either formed coalitions or introduced legislation for free school meals. So to your point, it's definitely moving in the right direction.
It's going to happen here. It's, it's, just makes sense.
And the twenty-five percent, I think, what now is eighty percent?
I think at the beginning, it was eighty percent.
Now it's down to twenty-five.
Well, I can't think of a better way of spending our federal tax dollars than to feed children.
Mr. Ross, did you have more?
A little bit. That's all I had for the cafeteria fund, because I'm only reporting through the end of August, and we don't have children in the summer, so nothing really happens in that fund very much. On the federal fund, I'm happy to report that the final cost reports for the federal grants for '22, '23 have been filed, and we're actually working on the final cost reports for GEAR and Essar. Those will probably be completed by the end of this week and submitted. And then the capital fund, things are moving along. We're starting to pay some of our liabilities, paying our architect, paying BCC, paying for small things, surveys, different things that are coming in. At this point in time, I'm confident that the cash that came from the reserve fund will cover us until we go to bond for the rest of them. That could change, it's just where we are right now at this point in time. Our cash flow looks good. I got an update from the state comptroller's auditor. Our report is in Albany, being reviewed there. Once it's reviewed from Albany, it goes to another person to be reviewed, and then to a third person to be reviewed before we get it. They said at least another month, if not longer, so just to update on that. And Mr. Blowers mentioned the electric school buses. I got a little bit of good news, I'm hoping it's good news, at a meeting that I attended through our state processing, like the ST3 processing, all of that processing. There's going to be a new report that we have to report on, and it's electric vehicles in the schools. And I think they're gathering data because they're going to push the date out further to meet those goals, because the infrastructure is just not there. And the way that they're going to fund it is through transportation aid, not building aid for the infrastructure. So it's an interesting-
My biggest concern is, is we contract out transportation. We're a small, you know, the first student can do internationally.
Yep.
Just as small, and I just wonder-
I send all the, as I get information, the first person I send it to is Leonard. I get information on grants, I get information on different things, I send it right to Leonard so that they can start looking into it.
I can see first student taking care of Buffalo and some of these other universities well before they take care of East Aurora.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's my concern about the whole thing, really.
Right. Oh, there's lots of concern, lots of concern.
To outfit the garage with all the electrical capacity is-
I see it as a very good thing for like cities, like the city of Buffalo, because their geographical footprint is so much smaller. But for rural districts, these buses, they don't have the capacity, especially like in a snowstorm, to reach our furthest out and get back. That's where my concern lies.
Yeah, there was a lot of discussion Monday night about the, about that, and there were multiple resolutions with regards to, you know, the positions of NISBA on that, and a lot of the rural districts raised concerns similar to what Mr. George just brought up, including the idea that if they were transporting students from, say, Springville Griffith to a park for a cross-country meet, and there's no place for them to charge the buses, they may have difficulty getting them back to that. There's a lot of different, there's a lot of different things that need to be looked at, and one of the resolutions was with regards to advocating for a feasibility study.
Yes.
Which was one of those.
Another big concern is if there's a huge power outage. It must be heat in an electric car. We have the heat on, the battery just drains so much more. So I'm hoping that them gathering that data is to push those dates out, but I don't know for sure.
Mr. Ross, thank you for taking the time to go to those meetings, so we have information from, does anyone have any questions on the financials come around? Are we getting a monthly report?
Now that the audit's passed, it'll start up next month.
Start those up again? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Item B, summer curriculum and professional activities.
Oh, yeah. Okay, a few highlights from the summer. Parkdale, they, I'm sorry, I'm at the top of my game at nine-thirty, so I'm going to start again. Okay. I'm going to talk about some highlights from each building overall, and then what we're focusing on moving forward. We adopted a new math program, which you heard about at- We adopted a new math program, which you heard about at the curriculum review for math back in February. So, a lot of Parkdale teachers used some time to plan and prepare for the new math program. We adopted a new UPK program through the textbook committee. They used a lot of time to look at the scope and sequence of that and begin to plan that out. Fourth grade worked on ELA and social studies standards and aligning them together. We've had a lot of co-teaching training that Cindy has offered. So, a lot of co-teaching teams developed and planned some strategies, enhanced some methodologies to meet students' needs, developed modified curriculum materials. Uh, we have two self-contained classrooms at Parkdale. One is new, one was there last year, but both teachers are new to those positions. And created some SEL activities, some first grade teachers worked on that. At the middle school, again, we have two 811 classrooms. They worked on mapping and planning together. More co-teaching professional development for math seventh and eighth grade. There's some new next-gen standards coming out in the, for Algebra I, and then it's rolling up to the other courses at the high school. So, they began aligning their old curriculum to the new standards. Spanish got a new textbook last year, so they continue to work on that. More co-teaching time together, using some Kagan strategies. Fifth and sixth grade is looking at, I think I mentioned this at the curriculum review, but fifth and sixth grade are looking at the Eureka Squared Math Program, so we can roll it up to them hopefully next year. New York State has some new required science investigations. There's four investigations, which are basically lab, labs, that have to be done between third and fifth grade. And then on the new fifth grade science assessment, they're assessed on the content that was in those investigations. And there's also four in grade six through eight. So, we've had to, had to do a lot of work, um, learning those investigations and just talking about how we're going to roll them out and catch kids up. Um, and then EL, uh, fifth grade continues to restructure because they had gone from the 80-minute block to the 60-minute block two years ago. High school, some of the same stuff. Sustainable agriculture used quite a few hours to plan out their new curriculum. We had a, I mentioned this at the last meeting, I think, we had to send three teachers to some AP trainings. Teachers move around assignments or new courses, or they have to teach courses they haven't taught in a while. ELA continues to adopt new novels. And they had got new texts two years ago, so they continue to align and implement those. And then Blue Devil Design continued to develop their curriculum. So, overall, 1,064 hours were used by 93 teachers. That money comes from title funds that Joanne gives me. And then, we've done this the last couple summers, we've used the federal funding from COVID to fund some additional opportunities, professional development for teachers. And those were these, the ones I just talked about were these hours. These were in addition to these hours. So, we had, uh, our tech tosta, Lisa Brown, offered some technology trainings on Tuesdays. So, 15, 15 teachers attended various ones for 116 hours. We had another four-day restorative practices team training. We have 18 new members that attended the four-day training, 22 returning members. We had a Days Three and Four of Kagan Cooperative Learning, which 29 of our teachers attended. And then we had a co-teaching training in June that 20 teachers attended. Just very quickly, looking forward for this coming school year, we'll continue to focus on restorative practices, which you've, you heard about in May, and you'll be hearing about more as the year goes on. And kind of tying together restorative practices, social, emotional learning, Kagan. We have a consultant that we're working with that's going to kind of bring it all together and show they're not separate silos. It's all about the whole child and reaching the whole child. It's not, um, it's, they're, they're, they're all dependent on each other. So, we have a board of odd policy we're working on, we have larger teams at each building. We're going to start working on Tier Two circles, which is, um, Tier One is about building community. Tier Two is more about, uh, how can we fix a problem, maybe a class is really talkative. How are we going to sit down and talk about how we can respect each other's voices and time? So, we're going to work on more circles around academics and, uh, more than just community building. Uh, we have a big curriculum mapping initiative moving forward. We're trying to get everybody to have their, um, their curriculums mapped out and have them located in one place. So, they can, uh, we're, that's, this helps ensure vertical and horizontal, horizontally within a grade level or, um, subject area, that everybody's teaching the same thing and hitting all the standards. And then verti, and every student is getting the same experience in a course or a grade level. And then, of course, vertically, that we're, um, uh, it's flowing from year to year. We're working with Parkdale for their, uh, they have a 40-minute time block during the day called intervention. And we're working, um, with Parkdale to just work smarter during that time and make sure remaining all of the students' needs, whether they're, uh, need enrichment and are accelerated, or just need some classroom intervention. We're continuing our writer's workshop training. We'll have some PDE time for our new K4 math program. I'm running a few book studies. Uh, right now, we just started What Great Teachers Do Differently, I have 30 teachers enrolled in that. I actually had a teacher reach out that wanted to run one for the district. Sanctuaries, self-care strategies for stressed-out teachers. And then I'm going to run one next, or 2024 in the spring, Grading for Equity. For the Kagan Cooperative Learning, we have, we had a couple of teachers that have been extensively trained, and they're running Structure-A-Month Club meetings. So, once, once a month after school, they run, um, a meeting for anybody from the districts invited, whether you've been training Kagan or not. And they folk, they pick, uh, they pick one cooperative learning structure for the hour meeting. And they teach them the structure, they have them experience it, they do a team-building activity, and they do a silly sport and goofy game. So, it's a quick one-hour meeting, but the teachers can bring that right back to their classroom and incorporate it into their lesson plans. Uh, I mentioned the science investigations, of course, our Wellness Day. And, uh, we're focusing, we're starting to focus on grading practices. We'll probably report out more in the, um, spring. But a few of us went to a grading and assessment conference in April. And we had a grading committee meeting, uh, last May, our next one is next week. And, uh, really, the focus is on equitable grading practices. And why do we grade, what's our grading philosophy? Why do we collect grades? What's the point of grades? And we're really just starting to, um, beginning discussions with teachers around, around those topics and just making sure we're being equitable across the board for all students in every grading practice, whether it's in kindergarten or 11th or 12th grade. And we'll continue with our tech trainings, and we're having some professional development, kind of scattered throughout the year, but somebody's coming in on November 22nd to just talk about inclusive classroom practices and all students are everybody's students. So, I was really fast because it's, it's, it's almost going to be 10 o'clock here, but I'm willing to answer any questions, or if anybody wants more information on something, I can do it. Any questions?
I have a quick question, though. But not what you just went over, the, um, the provision for the school violence and the intervention training. How's that received, I got two questions. One is, how's that received by the teachers? And is everything punitive there? If you actually don't identify a student and that student creates some problems in the district, is there anything punitive because a teacher had missed that?
Are you talking, what do you, which one are you talking, which one are you referring?
I don't think it's any of those.
Okay.
Sort of a broader level, a broader district question?
That was part of the report that I read.
Oh.
I was reading the wrong report. Is there something that's prevention intervention training that they have to go through to identify a student?
Threat assessment.
CPI is the.
There's so many trainings right now. I'm thinking of our safe school videos, I'm thinking of the suicide prevention videos we have launched.
The Mary, Mary, um, intervention training. And we all got trained on it.
Yeah, so we have two in-house employees who are, can be, to train other people. So, um, I guess to answer your question, is there any liability if something happens? I don't believe so, I haven't actually been through the training. That's, that's Cindy's wheelhouse. But we have several teachers and aides trained.
And that does cover us for liability, the training actually helps us to cover us for liability.
Yeah, it expires every, every, every year. Aggressive?
Aggressive, yep. And so, they, they are trained specifically to intervene in those circumstances in that. Oh, I wouldn't say is it ultimate liability, but what it does, it certifies them to act in that capacity for us.
And what's great about that training is it focuses a lot on de-escalation.
Yes.
Prior or proactively, so that it never has to, so hopefully doesn't reach, you know, a higher level of intervention needed.
As long as we're doing it and. I didn't think you'd have a teacher be responsible if something happened, I didn't notice it or call them that.
That's the reason they go through that training hall, to give them that certification that allows them to intervene and apply those techniques. And, and as they said, the first step is always for de-escalating. All teachers know how to de-escalate, uh, but then some circumstances will have to a different level. And so, this training helps those people that are, are kind of responding to, I would say, a more assertive situation. And, and they are then using those trainings to, to bring the situation down. And then they're also trained in terms of holding techniques and stuff like that to make sure that the job is safe.
Yeah, that, um, we have that coming up. Uh, the people who already certified last year, it expires within the next few months. We're working on setting up recertification, but at the same time, these students, they might move into the district, they change teachers. So, we're also gathering a list of teachers who need to be trained on that because of the students' change, they're different places every year, so.
I know last year, we had a retreat based on some of this. Is there any plan on doing that again this year?
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
We haven't, we haven't talked about it in retreat. It's like, you know, last year, to talk a little bit about the, the training. You understand, like, restorative practices and things like that.
Yeah, we did a Kagan activity, we've talked, we've talked about restorative practices. But if you want more in-depth, there's a lot of stuff here, we've got more in-depth stuff on that, or something different, or, yeah. You can do that.
Have you ever joined your book club?
Sure.
Would that, would it not be?
We, let's talk about those sorts of opportunities separately. It's all asynchronous through classroom. Weekly questions, weekly chapters, yeah.
Thank you.
I have one brief question. I, I'd be interested in hearing, uh, sometime in the future about the teaching of reading. Uh, I, I know for years, we, we were adamant that something called whole language was the way to go with regard to reading. And of course, if you followed any of the recent, uh, news about movements in curriculum, there's a change back to phonics and what they call scientific instruction in reading. And the city of New York, as a matter of fact, ordered the entire school district, that's 900,000 students, by the way, to, to now be instructed in a completely different approach to the teaching of reading. So, I'd be curious to know where we stand on that issue right now. But I don't want to know it now, I would like to know it sometime in the.
Kind of prepare for you.
Sometime in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think one thing is, I think we're, Ms. Lyons, we're, I think we.
Yes, clearly.
Pumping the brakes a little bit.
It's incredible to see how much professional development, how many opportunities are available and how many folks are taking advantage.
Great.
Sorry, that our folks are engaged and continuing to learn. We are moving on to item two, three, four, five.
Well, um, I just put it on the agenda because it was brought to our attention at the last meeting, and when our bus drivers come down and share some of their concerns. Again, this is more like, um, just a, we want to have a formal discussion about it.
I just want to, I don't want to forget, we, Cindy and I sent a survey out to other districts. So, we do have the results, we weren't prepared to present them today or talk about them, but.
I'm just going to say, we're doing some of that, we're doing some, some research on the topic. And so, I just wanted to know if the board wanted to put that on the, a formal agenda item. I think she, you know, I think, uh, Heather was our bus driver for many years.
Definitely.
She's wonderful, she's been with the district for, for, for many, many years. And that's not always the case with bus drivers, they do move around. Uh, and I think she, um, you know, I think she presented a really good, um, you know, just food for thought and our consideration, how do we address it? And so, we did, we, we doing some research and asking other school districts what they're doing, and we'll be prepared to present that. Is November good then? We'll kind of put it on the agenda for November, yes?
I was actually, that was on my agenda things for next, I was going to bring that up. And specifically, I think that's great, the research in it, but I was wondering if specifically one of the things that, that could be an action that could take place, is she had mentioned that we used to do trainings, she used to go to the elementary school, and they used to do safety trainings, and they don't, they haven't done that in a few years? I, I thought, well, that's something, like, some of the other stuff, like she said, you can't find aides out of nowhere. But the, I, I wonder if they would be interested in, in participating in some training, just for their own, for everybody's safety? And I wonder if that's something that anyone would be willing to implement.
Sure, in the past, um, some of our actually counselors and school psychologists worked with them in terms of de-escalation of behavior. Those types of things, like, as they're, as they're dealing with misbehavior on the bus, sometimes aggressive behavior, whatever. I mean, we, our, our, our counselor psychologist worked with them in terms of helping them, you know, create a little zoo bag, you know, that they can think about as they're trying to. I think for, for these youngest students, it is a challenge of, of keeping them seated because they're just active at age, you know, it's just natural. Long bus rides are difficult for them to deal with, so how do we, how do we manage that? And how do we help the bus drivers, you know, feel secure and safe in their role?
And if they, if those three or, three or four-year-olds didn't have, if they have an initiative, they're capable of, I mean, not all of them, they're still going to run around, but they are capable of, of getting that kind of instruction altogether and understanding. You, you have to sit, you can't move. And it, and it seems like it, you can say it to one individual at a time, but if it's not a formal thing, they may not understand it as well.
Well, there may be other administrative things that you could do. You know, you can look, the number of students on any particular bus run.
If we're, if we're going to schedule this for, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut everybody off, but we're getting late. And if we're having an executive session, we're not going to be very useful if we don't move on. Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry to say this, but just so you all know, that the, one of the things for the board visitation that someone asked to see was arrival at Parkdale and to potentially speak to some of the bus drivers. So, and that will be the, who are discussion at the next meeting, just so you all are aware of that ahead of time.
Let's have a conversation about it, we're having a, make sure everybody's prepared, if that's allowing us to be hanging out chatting with the bus drivers.
But we chat with people all the time during our visits to the schools. Chatting is a good thing.
They move around the buses. They move.
Yeah, right.
All right, moving. All right, moving on to item 12, thank you. Consensus items, is there anyone who wishes to withdraw a specific consensus item?
No.
Hearing none, moving on to item C, may I have a motion to approve the consensus agenda? Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Second by Mr. Blowers. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed?
Abstentions?
Carried seven zero. Moving on to item 16, items requiring board action. May I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Professional Learning Plan? Moved by Mrs. Daniel. Second. Second by Mrs. Blowers, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement between the East Aurora University School District and the East Aurora Faculty Association. Moved by Mrs. Proda. Second by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion.
Can, can you just tell us what brought this on, Mr. Russ? I don't recall.
I have this one in front of me, um.
She got time off.
Oh, yeah, so what happened was, um, some people have taken the time off for, like, say, a three, they, and they've come back to school, and then they're reapplying for the position. And so, do they start back at step one, or do they, they resume where they were in the, in the stage?
Your culture, your.
Yes, for culture, yeah, like, for instance, say they're, they're doing a club, and they're at step three, and do they come back and now they go at step four, and do they rejoin the staff? That basically, just clarifying.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Item 17, the superintendent recommends Board of Education accept the 2022-2023 audit as detailed in your agenda attachments and presentation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Blowers?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brunson, discussion.
Brief discussion. Just so the whole board knows, there are four members of the audit committee. We've always had two board members and two community members who are experienced, very experienced in, uh, in business management, in, in, in one case, in educational finance. So, thank you to A.J. Block, and thank you to Philip Cadet for serving for many years on the audit committee, along with Paul and myself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brunson. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Carried seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends Board of Education authorize the district treasurer to increase the following, the reserves, the capital improvement reserve, capital reserve for technology, and the EBLAR. for technology, the EBLR, the liability reserve and the repair reserve as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion.
No move.
Moved by Mr. Blowers.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Carried 7-0. Item C, the superintendent recommends Board of Education accept the 2022-2023 Audit Management Letter Corrected Action Plan as detailed in your agenda. I have a motion. Moved by Mr. Blowers. Seconded by Mrs. O'Wiler. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Carried 7-0. We do not have any policy for number 18 right now. Is, number 19, is there any new business for the board or to be added to a future agenda? Hearing none. The list of items of information, thank you so much, Ms. Casey, board meetings, and the NISBA conference and other events. I would suggest we move into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. When we come back from executive session, it will only be for the purpose of adjourning the meeting. The board will take no further action at that time.
So moved.
By Mr. Brunson.